That's awesome.
Yes, she's real smart.
Okay, we're live streaming.
I'm like, I'm gonna go look at this diabetes clinic. I'm like, I pulled someone over today. Yay, for me.
Well, maybe you'll pull someone over famous like, you know, who's famous from this area?
Couldn't tell ya.
Tom Hanks, when he was coming down here for the movie.
Oh, yeah, what was, that's one of them.
Well, that's over with. I think.
Yeah, yeah.
The movie is, the movies.
The trailer's out.
They use on the.
Yeah, it's on the trailer. We're going to Casterville.
Casterville, yeah.
So, the movie is supposed to be showing Christmas Day.
I was watching a show last night. What was it? Uh, Chicago, was it Chicago Beauty? Or no, 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 no. Uh, what is it? NCSI Los Angeles? And they said, we're going to Fiorella. And I went, Fiorella, Fiorella Street. And they said, Fiorella Street. It was funny. I was like, oh, we're digging that. That was funny.
Yeah, I saw, I saw the trailer. It was really on Blue. I'm like, what?
Yeah, Joe came home and he's like, hey, hey, can I look this up? And I'm like, okay.
He produced the movie. So, he believed in it. So, and I don't know. But it was.
No, he didn't see.
I know Tommy Lee Jones lives in San Antonio.
He, we were talking about that.
Oh, no, he's been written up numerous times because he, during drought constrictions, he still waters his lawn and everything like that.
Yeah.
He lives on Elizabeth Street.
I don't even know where to go.
He's got a place in San Saba. He's got, he's got.
How are you?
Where?
San Saba.
Yeah, I was gonna make that up. Yeah.
Oh.
Coffee shop, uh, the new electric congressman, he's a veteran.
Yeah, I am.
Um, the coffee shop here, the new congressman.
They have a lot of the trolleys.
I was doing docents at the.
Between hours, seven thirty, eight thirty. They buy coffee for the veterans.
Hey.
That's it. So did I.
I'm here for six minutes.
There you go, get a free cup.
First half of California as we've had.
Yeah, I told you the, the story about when I was in Casterville.
I mean, so there, you know. Not in me, huh? Okay, I didn't meet him. Okay, yeah, I'm on that, okay. Yeah, no, what made me sad is the big thing.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I know it's not. It's just. It's, it's just. Just knowing that if the end result is E, all of us veterans are gonna have to fight for our benefits again for another four years. Yeah. Not ready for your taxes to go up? Yeah. Oh, yeah. 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 Oh, yeah, that's just like, with us, you know, walk right in. Okay. And Christopher, since he's out of state, he was able to do the absentee ballot thing.
Did you absentee?
Oh, yeah.
See, when I was.
John, did you want coffee? There's coffee back there. Oh, yeah, whatever you wanted.
He wants more doughnuts.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, they, they turned around and, uh, Christopher's like, gosh, I hope my absentee ballot gets here. And it's like, why? Because over there in Charleston, people were taking them and just chucking them. Yeah.
Sure, are we, sir? Are you, sir? You ready, man? Okay.
You're lightning this night. Oh, I hear you there. That's perfect. That's perfect.
How are you? How you doing? You okay?
I mean, I'm really good. Turn on the light on my work.
Hey, he's in your turn.
Where will we get to?
Yeah, Steve.
You got a slice?
Sure. I was gonna tell you. Steve, we had the other day related.
That's not all the way until, like, towards the end. There, there you go.
I mean, there's a perfect rap. We just, everyone's doing, Brett's doing, uh, Brett's stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, happy birthday, brother.
Yeah. I told her, as a person, I told her, happy birthday, great job.
She wants, she wants to see what I do.
Yeah, my, uh, my son's, uh, PAC NCO at the setup is a, is a master gunnery sergeant. He turns around, he goes, he's got two master gunnery sergeants that's over his, his group. One, he goes, one, Grand Paris silent. He's like, okay, you don't wanna screw with that. He goes, he goes, the other one, he got a medal.
Really?
He's like, all right, don't miss it.
There was, who was he? He was the, uh, he listed, like, John, what do you call the staff? The army officer, your trucks. Those are the people that need to.
Doing Jimmy's name. Wow. They live, uh, the pigment plant.
Oh, yeah.
Pump sewage to their farmland.
Well, what I like is that.
But, uh, they live down on River Road.
Since the Marine Corps have been doing their.
And, uh, in fact, it's the first property in the city. The cities.
Over the summer and everything.
So, they live just outside.
The riots, there even more happening. But, uh. Well, the president of the school is, is.
She went to Florida.
One of the former, uh, deputy commander on the Marine Corps.
Yeah.
And so, he talked to them. So, they have, they have.
Hey, when you get a chance, if you're gonna do this, put that, that internet cable line.
It is good.
I'm talking with all, like, construction traffic, they're gonna, you know, cut it through one of these days and we won't have internet there. But, well, if they do, it's not a big thing. We just. Okay, okay. Because I think we need here a water jetting machine. We're gonna come in there when it's over, then excavate out what's there and put it into the base in about two inches of pressure manhole. And we'll do that. So, when they bury it, they could bury it about a foot deep would be great. Coming along, by the way, I don't know if you've seen it, but, uh. Did they stucco it today or not?
No.
Okay, they're supposed to stucco it maybe tomorrow. It's gonna be fancy. It's stuccoed inside and outside. So, it's kinda an offset.
Howdy there, Mr. Derek. Uh, thank you, got cleaned up.
Yeah.
Well, looks good. You gotta do the same thing.
Yeah. Were you dirty? My hair was getting fluffy.
Got a nice haircut.
Gotta trim it up on occasion.
You shut that down. Give a shout out to the cameras until you get your haircut.
Holy teenage. I'll try to live up to Paul's standards.
There you go.
Did we hear from Paul?
Uh, no, he, he contacted me yesterday, though. He said that he was gonna call in because his wife tested. It took 25, four hours on that. I haven't heard from him, so they may not have heard anything.
Okay.
His wife tested?
Well, he went, she went ahead and tested, because he said that she had blue light symptoms over the weekend. And so, they thought it'd be best, and he thought he was, stay home and call in.
Okay, great, is he on right now?
Uh, let me see here. Whoops.
For three minutes, like.
Well, okay, let's get started.
No, he's not yet, so.
Okay.
Let me, hang on one second. All right, I'm recording.
All right. So, let's call the meeting to order at 5:03. Um, roll call. Uh, we have everybody except Councilman Kerry, and he is still not on the line?
I don't have any yet.
Okay, great. All right, let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Captain King, uh, you ready to begin the invitation?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Dear God, watch over our community, watch over our country. Help us come to harmony, not just in our country, but also in our community. Look over our shoulders and help guide us in decisions we make for our community. Amen.
Well, sir.
Thank you.
Phil.
Phil.
Thank you.
All right, let's go on to citizens' comments. Anybody here wanna get up for citizens' comments? Okay, we got anybody online?
No.
Okay, you good?
Well, and, I don't know if you wanna.
Oh, yes, we do.
I don't know if we wanna read it, the time of the agenda item. Ms. Helen said that she, didn't think she'd be able to attend. And for Shawna to see it, and she'd like for someone to read it.
Okay. And just, uh, what is your preference? Should we read Kyle? Okay. All right, sounds great. There was, uh, I did get a call from, uh, from Bob Lee. He wanted us to look at, he apologized for not gracing us with his presence. I told him he'd be forgiven this time, but I don't expect that to happen again. He wanted to talk again, I think he brought this up before, about the, um, the sewer rate, um, based on the four months of, uh, winter. So, uh, he wanted to ask if staff could take a look at maybe shortening that up. He, uh, he feels like there is, um, not something we should act on right now, but, uh, I'm trying to think of exactly how he stated it. He'd like to take a look at the numbers because he feels like we are losing revenue because people are holding back in, in watering their lawns during this time. So, he wanted us to look at shortening that period down to, you know, two or three months or something like that, a little bit less, because this is still, obviously, prime watering time. Okay, um, that's all I have. All right, um, updates on governor's orders and status report on COVID-19 cases?
Okay, uh, the numbers are going up because people aren't doing like they should be doing. And our city staffs know better. I see them in the morning in their vehicles, two people in the vehicle, no one's wearing a face covering, on my way to Lidl. And I've seen them get out to pick up stuff, both people not wearing any face covering, side by side, shoulder to shoulder. We need to reinforce this. I know, uh, a member of the staff at Franco Elementary has tested positive. So, we need to make sure our house is squared away and reiterate more and more, the numbers are going up. Right now, the numbers, we have two confirmed active cases in Casterville, but for the county, there's 369 probable cases they're waiting results on. The numbers are going up, so we, we need to still be vigilant. And yes, they're having a vaccination that is 90% effective, but they don't know if that 90% will be an initial, one good shot, or if it's gonna be like hepatitis, to where shot now, and then maybe one or two months down the line, you get another shot, and six months down the line, you get another shot. They still don't know on that. So, there's, until they say, yep, blessed off, approved, passed human trial, all this stuff, we gotta be vigilant. So, please, 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 you know, follow the rules. If you have any questions, please ask. That's, that's what, that's all we're asking for.
And it is imperative that we set the example.
Yes.
I mean, we have to set the example, uh, and I'll ask Layroy, make sure that, that we as city staff are setting the example. It's, it's twofold. One, we can't afford to lose our staff members. I mean, that, when we looked at that before, just the blast radius of that is, is terrible. And we have to set the example, why would other people do it if they don't see us doing it? So, we have to be vigilant about that. All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
All right, um, let's see, we have a consent agenda. We have a lot of, uh, we have minutes, a bunch of minutes. Okay, minutes for October 22nd, 2020, specially called joint, uh, council and planning and zoning commission work session meeting. The minutes for October 26th, 2020, special called council meeting. Minutes for October 27th, 2020, special called council meeting. And then another minutes for, uh, the October 27th regularly called council meeting. Acceptance of quarterly financial report and, uh, acceptance of quarterly investment report. Any discussion? Councilman?
Sure. No discussion here.
Captain King?
No discussion.
No, I'm good.
All right, great.
I'll make the motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. That's a lot of minutes, thank you. All right.
Are you figuring four now?
Yes, very much.
All right, so, the next agenda item is recognition of Casterville Regional Park winning the best park in Medina County, 2020. So, for those of you who have not seen this, I'll hold it up for the camera. Do you guys all see that?
Cool.
And this was voted on, um, how many total votes were there?
Over 3,000. Four of us, so, one.
Yeah.
Quite a bit.
Nicely done.
That's kudos to Devin, huh?
Yeah, Devin had a friends.
Yeah, they're friends of Regional Park, too.
And all the friends, yes.
When you guys have a really good teamwork, you have a great partnership. Um, I love the way that you, uh, approach that. So, nicely done. All right, hold on a second. Okay, um, and then now we have a presentation from Casterville Conservation Society. Uh, we've got Mary King and, just, Mary Beth is not here, correct?
Mary Beth decided, you better not come.
Okay.
She's a little bit afraid of the COVID. Numbers, numbers going up. I bet it. Can it stop if I take a song?
Yes.
She was, she was concerned about the COVID, um, numbers going up. So, we normally would've had more members here anyway, but, um, we decided it was safer this way.
That's prudent, thank you.
So, okay, my name is Mary King. I am the president of the Casterville Conservation Society. I'll refer to it as CCS from now on. Our organization was chartered July 11th, 2000. Our mission statement says, "The mission of the CCS is to preserve and to encourage the preservation of historic buildings, archaeological sites, objects, places, and customs relating to the architecture and history of Casterville, Texas, its natural beauty, and all that is admirable distinctive to our area. And by such physical and cultural preservation, to keep the unique history of Casterville legible and intact, to educate the public, especially the youth of today and tomorrow, with knowledge of the inherited regional values." Quite a long mission statement. But if you were to Google "Alsatian architecture in the United States," the only place that comes up on the search is Casterville, Texas. Sometimes we who live here forget the uniqueness of our town and our history. It is for this reason why we proudly get visitors from Texas, United States, and from around the world. We in the CCS believe that the uniqueness of Casterville should be protected and highlighted so others will appreciate what we have here, not just the buildings, the cemeteries, the river, crosshill, our historic parks, and even the historical layout of the original township. Historically, the society's big event fundraiser is the candlelight home tour held on the first Saturday in December. Of course, it's canceled this year. By having our preserved historic homes and buildings on tour, guests have been able to see firsthand a few of the fine examples of these historic structures. With the proceeds from these tours, CCS has helped on projects such as the windows at the city hall, the downstairs ones, anyway, restoration of the Berry Home at the Living History Center, and window treatments at the Landmark Inn, to name a few. The reason for, um, we have three reasons for coming here. First, to reacquaint the council with our efforts of the CCS. Second, that we hope you remember the uniqueness of our city whenever you make decisions that might alter the historic nature of the city. And third, to let you know, we are willing to help where we can in retaining Casterville's historical uniqueness and maintaining an enjoyable place to visit. And some examples that we have come up with, such as enhancing, um, Houston Square, helping maintain Steinbach House, our antique lighting in the historic areas. I was given this little poem quite a while ago. It was written by Ruth Renhart Wilson in 1998. And it says, "A little bit of heaven dropped from the sky one day, and it fell upon Texas in a spot so far away. And when the angels found it, it looked so quaint and fair. They said, suppose we leave it because it looks so peaceful there. Then they sprinkled it with stardust just to make the flowers grow. You can't find any prettier place, no matter where you go. Then they made a silver river around a lovely hill, and when they had it finished, they called it Casterville." So, that's just a, a little bit about uniqueness. We're going to, um, or I'm going to leave you, um, with a little appreciation gift, and also, it's kind of a, a little reminder, when y'all do make decisions, we have these mugs, right? And it says, "Keep Casterville historic." And so, we have one for each y'all. There's also another line that was written by somebody in Casterville. I have, I don't know who that person is, or the name is Carolyn Bookens, but I do not know who that person is. But there's also some candy, and there's a membership phone. I'd like to get that for me, Red, so that we could maybe do something with that. Oh, thank you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. You have to pay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that was very nice. All right, um, so we had, Keith Lutz was gonna come here. Doesn't look like he made it.
Well, I don't seem, and, and I haven't had any response from him. I don't know if he had, but, um.
So, this, this is consider and take appropriate action on adopting a resolution approving the updated Medina County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Uh, and they were gonna come here and talk about that, and Chief Jackson was the other one that had worked on this. When do we need to have this approved?
Uh, we have. Maybe that's him, because I was gonna say, we have to do this before our next council meeting is the reason why it's on there.
Right.
And it, and I see someone. Uh, the main thing is, we just aren't sure about the updates. I don't think there's a lot of them, but I'm not sure which ones they did. And someone's coming in the door now.
Nope.
No.
That's Keith Lutz.
Yeah, it is.
There's Keith Lutz.
Perfect timing, you're up.
Wow, that was the introduction.
Come on up. You walked in perfectly. We're at your part now.
Perfect. There's nothing like walking in and going right to it, then. I know, nicely done. Thanks for coming. Awesome, thank y'all. Thank y'all.
So, you would take it off so we could hear you, understand you? Thank you very much.
I don't look any better, but you might hear me better, so. Awesome. And please introduce yourself. Okay, I am Keith Lutz, Emergency Management Coordinator for Medina County. Great, thank you. Thank you for coming in. You bet. Okay, so, um, we wanted to talk about, um, the, uh, the Medina County Hazard Mitigation Plans. What's changed? Why the change? Uh, and what are we looking at here? So, there's actually not a change. This is a new, uh, plan. This is actually a culmination of some of even y'all's work and the city's work dating back to 2018, near the last quarter of 2018 is when this all began. Hired a company, Grant Works, that, uh, put this entire plan together. Prior to this, there was a, a cog, cog-wide plan for hazard mitigation. The state did away with those plans and said, you can't do one under the cog anymore. It has to be by individual, like a county. In some cases, they would allow a couple of counties to go together and do it. So, we actually reached out to all the cities and everybody participated in it. And the advantage to that is, if the cities didn't participate, then if y'all had some kind of a hazard mitigation proj, uh, project, then it would require the city to come through the county to make that project happen. Well, y'all are just a part of this plan, and it allows for you all to go direct. So, if there's any kind of hazard mitigation money, which always comes available after disasters, then you go through FEMA funding, and that's really what this whole thing is about, is opportunity to, to get, um, mitigation money and mitigation grants, um, on those items. So, uh, the plan itself is a brand-new plan. It's structured a whole lot off of, obviously, the things that were from the past and under those cog plans, uh, but, uh, obviously, more focused onto just Medina County and in turn, those cities. So, um, there's all kinds of data and stuff in here, but really, if you, in the, in the back, and I, I don't know that, I don't know how many of y'all have actually seen or read this plan, but it's, I think, 217 pages.
It's 217 pages.
It's a, it's a bunch of, it's a bunch of reading. Look, in the back, and I'm gonna get to, or.
I downloaded that on y'all's iPads, but I, I have a hard copy in my office, but y'all don't have it in your packet, so.
That's why I paid.
Yeah, that's why you don't have it in your.
So, really, on, on page 189 are the hazards that we identified inside of, uh, of the city of Casterville, specifically, some things to go after. And on those, the first one, and this really is a county-wide issue, it's not just for city Casterville, but, uh, be able to install generators and, uh, alternative, uh, power sources. So, now, you know, we got traditional generators, but there's a whole lot of, like, battery-type of generators that are, you know, that also do storage of power. And so, um, we just have a real issue, like, on our key buildings, whether it's police departments, city halls, um, key facilities that don't have a lot of generator and backup power. So, this gives you the opportunity to, to go after those monies. Uh, one that y'all had specifically was the need to add, uh, water storage tanks and pumps. So, that's in this plan for the city of Casterville?
I'm sorry. Would, I think Paul Kerry's on the line now, because that's who just called me. Do you mind announcing that he's on, if that's him? Paul, is that you?
Yes, I am on.
Okay, that way we can announce it.
So, we'll add Paul to the meeting at 5:20.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you. Councilman Kerry? Uh, we also had in here erosion protection and soil, uh, soil stabilization, uh, so installing, you know, to, things to deal with erosion and those type of things, whether it's along your rivers and stuff like that, or culverts, around culverts where y'all have washes, those type of things are covered in here. Um, adding a municipal water well. I believe y'all have a need for another one of those. Obtaining GIS capabilities for planning and project coordination. Uh, public outreach, so basically printing and doing any kind of public outreach that you may have. Hardware and software technology, um, making it available to communicate more readily with, um, during emergencies, so anything would fall, of course, that's pretty broad under that. Implement a tree trimming program. Hardening facilities, which would be for, um, you know, whether it's bracing, uh, bulletproof windows and facilities, so just hardening of, of key facilities. Storm drainage infrastructure. Uh, create and adopt a reverine erosion control, a master plan. Develop and implement a new drought ordinance and drought contingency plan. Replace current landscaping with drought-resistant, um, varieties. Review special flood hazard area boundaries. Hailstorm protection for public facilities. And, uh, that actually include, that could be sheds and stuff to store equipment under so it doesn't get beat up during a, during a hailstorm, for example. Lightning and surge protection on public facilities. Lightning and surge protection on public facilities. And new wet, I'm sorry, wet-proof, the wastewater system, so where you have problems with infiltration and stuff in your wastewater system, to be able to address that. And then new drainage analysis to update and revise the flood maps. So, those were kind of the key ones that got extracted over this time, and so they're in this plan, and if money comes available, then you would submit to FEMA, and obviously, it's already in here as part of what the plan is for the city of Castroville.
And so that would enable us to do this proactively, or this is reactively after a major catastrophe?
It's gonna be reactive to, as grant funds come available.
Gotcha, okay, cool.
Yeah, yeah, hazard mitigation funds.
I think you hit on pretty much most of the key items, and I know that you guys spent a lot of time doing that, so I really appreciate that.
Yeah, and Chief Jackson was involved a lot in this process with us as we went through it, and I know he came back and got with Public Works. I know on some, were some of those, some obvious items that I or the chief wouldn't know about that are in your plan. So that all came through Public Works and some items that were needed for the city.
Great, all right.
So today is really just an adoption of the plan, and once y'all adopt it, in the other cities, we did it last Thursday in Commissioners Court. So the counties adopted theirs, and pretty much as soon as everybody's adopted, then it goes into effect. We do, somebody just at the local level looks at it on an annual basis, and then we're supposed to look at it every two years, kind of as a group, and then it's a five-year plan, the length of the plan itself, for five years.
Great. I think that's really great. I think that we should schedule some time with Chief Jackson to go over this stuff, to get more in depth and talk it through.
And knowing, you know, that this has been a team effort, and so we'll continue that. We'll be monitoring also county level. If we see something comes up on the radar, and we'll all kind of know what's in this plan and reach out to, hey, are y'all interested in trying to do something on this?
I know he was talking about that time that we had the tornado scare.
Right.
I know you were on point for that, so thanks for looking out for that. We really appreciate that.
I was the cause of that, sorry.
Now, there were a couple of them, but people were concerned that we weren't reacting to that, and I think that it's, you know, it's really great that you are behind the scenes and taking care of that stuff, looking out for any emergencies that come here, so just know how much we appreciate you staying diligent with that.
No problem, and we appreciate, like I say, Chief and everybody here is, I mean, this is all just a team effort. I mean, we have a lot of people behind the scenes doing all the stuff, so as people are wondering what's going on, there's a lot going on back there. So, but it's all, we have really good cooperation, so thank you all.
Absolutely, and we'll work on making sure that we communicate that better so that people understand all the hard work that you're doing.
No problem.
Great, all right, thank you. Do I have a motion? Or do we have discussion? Let's have a discussion.
I don't need a discussion.
I don't either.
Me neither.
We need to ask Paul.
I'll make a motion.
Does Paul have any questions? Councilman?
He's off, can you? Paul, Paul, can you hear us?
Do you want to mute?
Yes, I can.
Do you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you. All right, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the...
Resolution.
Resolution, to adopt the resolution approving the updated Medina County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Great, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll email that over to you.
Take it out early.
There you go.
All right, thank you, sir.
Awesome.
All right, yeah, that is really great. I think that that's one of those things that, you know, as with all the rest of our plans, we need to be reviewing that, especially if any of the council turns over. We need to make sure that we're going through that for new folks. It's a lot to catch up on, so.
And it's all in y'all's iPads if you have time to go through and read it.
I've tried to.
It's extremely long.
I have. I've written the plans like that before, so it's like, ah, bad mole stomping ground.
I am not surprised at that at all. All right, so the next item is Consider and Take Appropriate Action on Directing Staff to Re-Advertise for Multi-Year Lease for Farmland Located at the Municipal Airport. So, everybody is familiar with the fact that we've gone out, and I think it is best if we re-advertise this. We only had one response, and there were, I guess the existing folks didn't realize that it was time, and just one response is not enough?
Well, I guess eventually, if that was the only one we came up with, and it was a decent one, yes, but we can re-advertise this, bring it back.
Yeah.
Bring it back in December, and I think we'll have some bids, and that way y'all can have a better group. I know the current farmer has already contacted David today, he said, to make sure that he doesn't miss it. I'll put it back in the paper, it'll be next week, and then I'll run it for at least two weeks, and then that way we'll have time to get it back to us in December.
Sounds great. Okay, do I have a motion on that?
I make a motion that we direct staff to re-advertise for bids on irrigated and dry farmland located at Castroville Municipal Airport.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You probably have it. Councilman T. Hart is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thanks, Paul.
Motion passes, thanks.
Paul needs to make the next one.
He tried.
All right.
Next?
Next item, Consider and Take Appropriate Action on Canceling, Canceling Council Meetings on November 24th and December 22nd, unless you want to be here for the holidays. Do we have a discussion on that, or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
That we cancel regular scheduled council meetings for November 24th, 2020, and December 22nd, 2020.
Great, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you. Everyone is very happy about that?
Sure, always.
Staff are, we all be happy about that.
Yes, we are, we appreciate it.
I wouldn't be here on the 24th anyway, the kid flies in that night.
All right, let's see, next item is Discussion and Take Appropriate Action on Creating a Project Donation Fund Account for Regional Park. Devin, did you want to read this?
From Helen.
Do you want to read this one from Kyle, or did you want me to?
I think it's to the council, and...
Oh, it is to the council.
So y'all, I mean, not that you couldn't, but you may want to read it.
Probably better read it than I am.
Probably not. All right, do you want me to start reading this, or you want to start with the other and we'll use it after?
Yeah, I can introduce the item. This item I brought forth to council as something that's been suggested from the past, either through citizens, local entities, the Friends have been asked about it. The reason it's separate, I can just give a little background. The Friends of the Park are a 501(c)(3). They are a volunteer group, they assist with a lot of the stuff to have to do with the parks, but when it comes down to it, it's a lot of responsibility to put all of this on them. We have a lot of groups that are volunteer groups, that they might come, and this is just an example, but they would donate their time, but also some kind of resource, if that's funding. So basically what this is a suggestion would be for us to open an account so that monies could go in there for long-term projects. Or something that if a local community group, they wouldn't have to go through the Friends, they could go as a fundraising source as the city. And then that way, it doesn't put all of the burden of fundraising and really a financial source as the Friends, allows the city to be involved also. Basically, that's all of what the item is. Do y'all have any questions pertaining to that?
I just want to make sure, how legal is it for us to do this?
This is legal, so basically what this is, we would open up an account, once y'all approve it, and then of course, I would sign off on it if the signers would. But this strictly would be for any outside donations that they want to come and donate towards, you know, the park itself, and designate for that specific project, so, but this certainly is a legal...
Well, I'm all for it, I just want to make sure that, you know, nobody, because those questions have been thrown up before, I know when my son did his Eagle Scout project out at the regional park, there was individuals that came forward and said, "Oh, that's not legal for them to give you donations to do your project." And it caused a halt, so I just want to get that on the record and everything, that this is legal, we are allowed to do it.
Yes. And you look at, like, right now, the Park's master plan that they're working on, that was donated through the Friends, and so the Friends, to your point, are working on things outside of just the regional park, so I think that it's nice for them. If that's what they want to concentrate on is specifically Friends of the Regional Park, then I think that we should respect that, and I like the idea of that. You might have read this?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. All right. Yeah, you read that now.
Yeah, let me just read this, and then we'll get into more. So this is from Kyle McVay, who is the current president of the Friends of the Castroville Regional Park. This letter is in support of Devin's request for a special donation fund account for Park's projects. The establishment of such an account has been requested for years, but to no avail. The creation of such an account will allow for donations and grants to accumulate over time, and it will most certainly provide more transparency and accountability than is presently possible. As one example, the tour to Castroville profits have always been designated to Park projects, but does anyone know what they actually purchased? We do not, because profits have always gone into the general fund. A special fund would fix this, and it would make us happy.
Make us happy.
Thank you so much. All right, Councilman Keane?
No questions. I just want to make sure that the Friends of the Castro Regional Park were on board for this, and it's accounted by the letter, by Kyle's letter, that they...
And Helen Dillivan sent the letter. So it was from her, so...
She's one of three. Yeah, she's one of three signatures. From an accounting standpoint, this is okay.
This is okay, and just to clarify, this is totally separate from the Friends of the Park. This is a separate bank account that y'all are gonna have access to, to actually sign off on any other checks that come in, it just says payroll, accounts payable. And so I wanted to get clear also that this is strictly for donations and not for grants, because all the grants really should be coming through the city of Castroville, and then we go from there versus this outside other account. So strictly for grants, I mean strictly for donations, and it is allowable, so all we ask is for your approval to open up the account, so.
This is somewhat similar to me as the account for the Berry R. House and for the Steinbach House. Those are accounts that were set up for those specific things.
Designated for certain things, to where that's all that comes out of it, whether it's for a certain project, grants would be a separate agenda, or, I'm sorry, checking or bank account anyway, because you have to keep them separate.
Yep, sounds good. All right, Councilman T. Hart?
No, I think Councilwoman Martinez had my question, and y'all have answered that one, no more questions.
Councilman Carey?
Councilman Carey, do you have any questions?
I do not, I'd like to put plans to me.
All right, sounds great. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, create a specific fund slash account for donations for Parks, for special Park projects.
That was easy to say. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Devin. And congrats on the regional park thing again, that is, that's awesome. Okay, so discussion, discussion on guiding principles for city council on, and this is on future developments, but just, and we talked about this briefly, so, here, let me bring this up. And let me read this. So the idea of this, here, and I'll just read this for anybody that has not gotten the packet. As we move forward in making decisions that affect the lives of everyone in Castroville, it's imperative that we are aligned on our guiding principles. These are the principles that all decisions should be measured against. If any decision violates any of these principles, we should not make that decision. The principles must align with the needs of the people that we represent, so we must work with stakeholders, we have to work with the people in the city, in our respective districts, but people at large as well, because we do represent the entire populace, to ensure that we are truly representing their wishes. So, I put together some recommendations, just to get us started. I don't feel that it would be appropriate for me to write the guiding principles, because they are not mine, they should be ours jointly. Did we get any responses back? Did anybody send back responses on suggestions, comments?
I didn't, but I do have one.
Absolutely.
Well-written, by the way, Derek.
Thank you.
In some things, we do, we go beyond the city. We take into community that surrounds Castroville, for instance, the Medina Valley Little League. It's, majority of those kids probably do not live in Castroville, and yet we support that. The library, we give special programs to people in the area, but not the city. And then the other one is the regional park. It's called the regional park because it goes outside the city. The city funds all these, but therefore, so somehow, we need to tweak that one little sentence that says, the second bullet point, we are responsible first to the existing people who live and work in Castroville, and we should not burden them with the expense of people who do not live here yet or have businesses here. I don't know exactly how to tweak that, but that would be one thing I think we need to tweak.
Yeah, I get what you're saying with that, and this would be, and the direction that I was going with that is really more like, one of the concerns that I've heard over and over about, specifically about the new development agreement with Alsatian Oaks, people were afraid that it was going to cost them money, that it was gonna provide risk for them. And so it's really, maybe with that portion of it, we leave that in any kind of development agreements, where we're working with new people that are coming in, it should not...
Burden the locals.
It shouldn't burden the locals, if we want to do, but I agree with you, I think that some of the stuff that we do, we do for the community at large, but we do have to do that with respect to the people that do live here and are paying for these things, because these are paid out of our taxes.
And maybe that's simply just, you know, and we, you know, in future, or in consideration of development agreements, we should not burden our, you know, in other words, if, to me, I got concerned if people were reading this, because I've been in some of the discussions with the library, with the regional park, with the Little League, and I would, I'd be concerned if they would think that we were changing our openness rule. I understand what you're saying now, you mentioned these had to do with development agreements, so maybe that's how it gets, talks about, you know, specifically related development agreements.
Well, so maybe what we do is, we take that and we say, without, so maybe part of this is, provide for anything that we are doing, better information available. So if you think about, if we're doing something that is going to benefit the Little League, we make sure that people understand exactly how much is going to it, how much they are, how much the citizens are costing, they're bearing, and make sure that we're talking to folks, make sure that, first, that they know what they're spending their money on, their taxpayer money, and second, that they agree with that. And obviously, we've got to figure that out with the populace at large. So I think that maybe if we include in here better, because I don't feel like we've got great visibility on some of these things. And just, it's a lot of information to put together, I think that if we can document it better and just make sure that we are allaying concerns, making sure that we have mitigated some of the concerns that people are bringing up, I think that if we do it like that, then maybe the change to this is simply without their permission, something similar to that, without their full knowledge and agreement of the direction.
And of course, the full knowledge is, is that the agreement with the Little League, for instance, that was approved by city council, you know, in open meeting. It listed out what the cost was, and, but I guess, again, I, to me, it needs to be softened, or even if we're just talking about development agreements, we say that if we're talking about other issues, because the way it's written now, you know, we can't go and ask the citizens, we can't have a, you know, what are they called, a vote of the citizens. So, we should take that into consideration, but again, we are Castroville, but we are also the community of Castroville. And when we make these decisions, and when city councils have made those decisions in the past, they realize that they are benefiting not just the citizens of Castroville, and that that, those decisions made by those past city councils, they, you know, they made those decisions specifically knowing that knowledge, but they, they've made on feeling that the citizens of Castroville will be behind those decisions. So, the way this is written, quote unquote, I don't think that's what...
You feel like it precludes that. You feel like it precludes that.
It needs to be tweaked somehow.
Okay.
To take into it that's not, because we're actually, the way we actually operate now.
And the rest of you guys, I agree with them. I think that that's right. We do need to take that into consideration and figure out how to tweak that a little bit. What are your thoughts on that?
Oh, no, I agree wholeheartedly. That way, people can see that we're looking at not only, you know, the well-being of people here, but the Castroville area, per se.
What are we doing as good representatives of the area?
Correct.
All right. Any other comments, suggestions, thoughts, changes?
On the, like, long-term vision, maybe something in that we are looking at growing the city forward without losing our past. That way, like what we were talking about with the Historical Society today, keeping our history alive and not losing it as we move the city forward.
Don't allow, okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Keep Castroville historic. Remember to keep Castroville historic.
Yeah, that, you know, that's part of our long-term vision right there.
Your vision statement kind of states that, too, and I'm trying to remember what it says. It's the city that, I can't remember what it, I'm so sorry. I forgot it. Is shaped by history.
Yeah.
Something about, and I had it in my head, I'm sorry. But yeah, we do have a vision statement that is something similar to what you're talking about.
Yeah, I like that.
But that way, we don't lose it, you know, and we keep moving forward without losing our past.
And I think maybe what we do is, we do that as the foundation of this.
Correct.
Yep. Okay.
How long is the vision statement fairly short?
It's very short.
We'll just put that as the first item.
I don't know.
We're looking.
And I can run, get it, it's on my desk. I can't, I've got it right now.
Is your thought that you would redraft this and then bring it to us again, or what's your thought?
Yeah, I think that if, well, I want to make sure that you all have a chance to look at this and tweak it, make recommendations. This is something that I'd like to come to an agreement as this current council of what we are going to do, and make sure, a lot of this is because I want to make sure that people understand what we stand for and what we are going to be doing. And this gives them the opportunity, not just to understand how we're approaching things, but also for them to take a look at it and say, you know what, I don't like this part of it. And if they tweak, if they want to make suggestions on what our guiding principles are that might change some of the decisions that we make, it helps empower us to make better decisions for them, for the people that we represent going forward. So it's really in an effort to give them an idea of what we will do and what we will not do. I don't want people to be afraid that we're going to go and spend all their money, that we're going to go and change everything, that we're going to go and, you know, uproot Castroville. I want to make sure that we are identifying what we are actually going to do, and specifically what we will not do. Okay. Councilman Kerry, any questions, comments, suggestions?
No, I did read through your guidelines, and I didn't see anything that was at all objectionable. I think that this is a, this is, it will be useful, and it will be helpful in our decision-making as well.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
Cool. Then we'll, please, if you will, make any of the suggestions, whether they're specific wording or general comments, please make those back to Deborah, and we'll compile those and see if we can come up with something a little bit better, more cohesive, that everybody can agree on. See if we're missing anything. And, you know, talk around, some of the folks around, make sure that they have the opportunity to interject some of their own thoughts and feelings in this as well.
Can Devon read the vision statement?
Yes, please.
And the vision statement's very short. It just says, "Where history shapes the future." And that's kind of play on words with what you're saying.
Yes.
But that was done in, I think, 2015.
I like it.
Short and sweet.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes, so that can be included in that.
Okay, good. Good discussion. All right. Let's talk about, let's see, what's the next one? Updates on projects. We'll start with the East Side Lift Station operation. We have John Gomez, Public Works Director.
Mayor, can we let Russell go first, if that's okay?
Yes. Russell Persian.
Thank you.
Can y'all have a hard copy, I think, at y'all's seat with what he's fixing to present?
I want her to wastewater.
Either way, I'm flexible, man. I'm ready to go either way. Is it okay if I take off my mask?
Yes, sir.
Looks like we're going wastewater? Uh-oh.
Yeah, let's do, whichever one you've got up first. We have water looping and wastewater treatment plant.
So wastewater's up first, we'll start there, if that's okay? Mayor?
Thank you.
Okay, well, good news, right? I'm here because we're done. Just to kind of recap for the council, because I know we've had a lot of new members since this project was undertaken and then constructed, but just as a reminder, the contractor for this project was Garni. They were procured as a construction manager at risk. The design engineer for the city was Freezzen Nichols. And basically, construction is substantially complete, and the plant is operating as it was designed and intended. The plant was an upgrade to a .9 million gallon per day facility, which roughly doubled capacity for the plant. We have one remaining item, which is a warranty item, which is some door replacements on the office building, but there are doors on there, and it's functioning, it's just not exactly the way we want, but they're working to get that resolved. That's the one remaining warranty item. Our firm was selected to serve as the resident project engineer, so we oversaw compliance with the specs and plans, and we're on site. I just want to, this project kind of lingered on for a couple of reasons. Nothing overly concerning, but despite that lingering, we were able to manage within our original contract with the city, so we didn't come back for additional fee for the additional time. And Terricon, who did the materials testing, came in under their original contracted budget, so just wanted to make those notes. I think those are positive notes for a project, so.
Thank you for all that you continue to do for the city. It's quite impressive. I know you do not just this, but on the economic development, the CADC, and you do so much else. I just want to express my appreciation.
Thank you very much, Darren. It's a privilege to live and work in the community.
Yeah.
And I have to both respect, as well as Terricon are managed, managing people in this area are both Aggies, so.
So they can't be all bad.
We won't hold it against them.
For those on the other side, in spite of that, I, you know, I'll do work for you as well, so. So just to give you some perspective, I figured getting a couple aerials might give you some perspective. You can get these off of Google Earth, but, you know, 2016 was before we started. Basically, that was the original plant. You can, you see the road coming in, and you've got kind of the primary sludge containment where the wastewater comes in, then it moves through the clarifier, and then out, gets chlorinated and goes into the ponds. There's an old, what we call a racetrack, not one you drive motorcycles or anything on, but it's, was where the wastewater used to go around, and it's actually filled in here. It was between the road and this pond to the, which is to the west in reality, but to the bottom of the page. That was abandoned at some point. And then you had basically sludge drying beds up at the top, so sludge would be removed and placed there. And so I think a significant cost to the city was when it got, when it was raining, right? Trying to dry sludge, and you got wet sludge, and it's raining, and so you'd have to dispose of it, and I think that was a significant cost for the operations, which the new plant helped to resolve. So on the right, it's 2018. This is, this is the most recent Google aerial you can get, so it's not quite at completion, and I got a photo or a video drone footage of completion here in a minute. Oh, sure, thanks, John. So this is the racetrack I was mentioning before, and these are the sludge drying beds up top. So at completion, basically, there's a new headworks facility right here. So wastewater comes into this headworks facility, and we're able to separate things out. We weren't able to do that before. The guys would actually be fishing things out of the tank, so you can imagine if a diaper or something that we can't biodegrade comes to the plant, they've got to, before, have to fish those out. The headworks helps with removal of that before it gets into the system. There were two, basically what we call BNR, so biological nutrient removal, so with this plant expansion, your option to be able to discharge water to the Medina River was basically a piece of this plant expansion. So prior to this plant expansion, all the water went into the ponds, and it goes up to the farmer who distributed, has a land application system. With the new facility, you'll be able to discharge that, but in order to do that, there are increased limits on the permit that you've got to meet for phosphorus and nitrogen to be discharged. And so these biological nutrient removal systems basically use biological processes to remove that, basically by putting it into the sludge, and then the sludge gets wasted, gets wasted, and it comes back up, and we've retrofitted this facility where you have a screw press. This was actually an item that the city staff at the time were pretty adamant about keeping, even when value engineering was going on. Basically, it's a big centrifuge that throws the water out of the sludge, so you can dewater the sludge, falls into a bin, and then that bin gets hauled off. And so basically, you're not, you're not subject to weather like you were with these open drying beds. So you're able to still process sludge, whether it's raining or it's dry, okay? So it goes from the BNR basins into the clarifier, so there's an expanded clarifier. The system can, can come back through the old system, I guess, or through the old process, and it basically all ends out here where there's a chlorine contact chamber. So again, things get chlorinated and basically go to the ponds. I think it's currently still operating for going to the ponds and then up to be irrigated. There's nothing being discharged currently. Actually, there probably needs to be some downstream improvements in order to get the water from where the facility would discharge to the river, but at this point, you're not at a flow level that you've got to consider discharging, so. So that's, that's the, if you'll go to the next slide, I think, and I don't know if the video will play, but maybe it will. So this is actually the completion of the plant. You can see the asphalt pavement is down through a part of the plant, and so this is kind of after everything was complete, so. I did mention that time got extended. There were a couple issues. One was with the utility water. Utility water's located over here. There were some revisions that needed to happen in that utility water, and it took some time working with the supplier. And the contractor to get that worked out, but they did get that all resolved, made some changes to that to get it resolved, and it is operating. And then the other issue was, there were some issues with the RAS pump, so the return activated sludge, so when the sludge accumulates on the bottom, it gets returned up to the sludge basin. There were some issues with those pumps, and if you talk to your operators, they'll tell you that was probably the least fun part of trying to make this thing go as it was being converted. And, but in the end, over some time, working with Freezzen Nichols, that all got resolved and at no additional cost to the city, so. So everything is operational and working good. If you go to the next slide, these are just some pictures. If you haven't been up there, I would encourage you to go. Scheduled with John and the folks there. These are almost nearing completion, but this is the admin building, so these are, this is the control center, so, you know, things are pretty actively controlled, and staff get signals. Go to the head of the next slide. This is that sludge handling facility, so it's undercover to be out of the elements. And then this is kind of a perspective view of those biological nutrient removal basins, and they've got mixers in here. Anyways, it's an impressive facility. You'll get a little odor if you go there, so, you know, be conscious of that, but it operates really well. And then this is the new chlorine building that was installed, and this is the last chamber, and then chlorine contact, and then out to the ponds. So just to give you kind of a background, I know when I've been out in the public, I've heard this project cost about $20 million, so I thought I'd just give you the numbers tonight, that way everybody, hopefully that's watching live and here. So this was almost a $9.3 million original contract price, okay? We had some change orders, about 1.5%, that's really nothing, honestly. Typically, a project will at least carry about 5% contingency, so. And most of these changes actually were probably owner requested. So for example, the chlorine building improvements, you had a TCQ audit during this time, and chlorine for the, basically after it goes to the ponds, it gets pumped back up to the farmer. It's got to be rechlorinated, and that facility was not compliant, and so we basically used some additional contingency funds that were in the loan in order to, and council approved those in those days. Council approved all these changes. That chlorine building improvements were basically done so that the compliance could be reached. There was a decision at one point to take the pavement around the facility out of the contract to save money, and the council at one point agreed to put that back in. We had to add some additional grout to the clarifier. We had to extend the curb and pad up there at the screw press, just so those containers could get out and be a little easier operation for the city staff. There was a new sump pump, there was some water and some issues on site conditions that we remedied, and then some additional fabrication of some aluminum plates for the plant. So this is the final contract price, $9.4 million, so. I guess I want to just close with, you know, you get an appreciation for the staff when you see them working through an active construction project and trying to maintain, you know, the facility working, and, you know, this went on for a couple years plus, and I don't think anybody in town ever had issues with flushing their toilets and things going right, and it's because of your staff there that were there every day and working through that, and I know there were some days they probably wanted to.
Quit.
Quit, yeah. That's a nice way to put it, Tom. And so I just really appreciate them. They were very patient, and they were very helpful as we were working through things, and, you know, it's a team effort, and you've got to have the operators and the designers and contractors all working on the same team. Another thing I just want to point out is, you know, Garni did early on, I think, build the storage facility down at the park, relocated Portis Lab. They did that on a Saturday as a way to kind of show their commitment to the community early on, and so anyways, I feel like everybody worked very well together. Project got delivered. Schedule could have been a little better in my mind on that delivery, but other than that, things, I think, came in as designed, and the city has got an infrastructure asset that will help serve it into the future, so. I think we're here today just to brief you that the project is complete, and I think we'll be maybe coming back, is that right, John, for subsequent action?
December 8th.
Yeah, December 8th. I think staff will be bringing back action to kind of close out the project officially with the council, so. The last thing I'll just say is, the Water Development Board has cleared everything from the loans perspective. All the paperwork, as built, have been submitted, and so they've issued their, I guess, agreement that it's within the terms of the loan, and funds can be released, so. With that, I'll take any questions, I guess, on wastewater plant.
Nice presentation.
And you got a copy of all the plans, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and I'm also having to resent to Deborah. She should have it here in a week or so, probably.
Thank you.
Councilman Cherry?
John, does that, I don't know nothing about wastewater treatment. Does that place take care of itself, or does it have to have staff there running it, operating it?
They have to have staff there.
How many staff people does it take to?
We have, we have three there now.
Those three guys that were just mentioned by Russell?
We're going to, actually, one of the projects has SCADA this year, and we're going to help with that.
Try to help be it more automated?
Yes, correct. That's one of our goals for this year.
So would you take a staff? Right now, you currently, it takes three to operate it?
Right.
With the SCADA, would you still have three there?
I think we would take the one guy out, maybe have him work on the, even in the evenings or weekends, maybe weekends, night, something like that.
Oh, have like a 24-hour deal going on?
Yeah, and probably we leave some of our, I guess, on-call personnel. That person's. person's working there, possibly doing some of the other stuff that we do now with on-call.
The guys that are driving around on Saturday and Sunday, like...
Yeah, hopefully that person's there to do those things. That's what I'm envisioning.
No further questions. Thank you.
Great. Anybody else?
Me. Well, go ahead. You asked by name, by name, don't ask me by name.
Counselor McGee?
You know, it's kind of ironic. That facility is the greatest single asset that the city owns. I mean, nothing else we have around here is worth $10 million, but it's so important. We cannot exist without it. And not just in practicality, but by government regulation. And we should all be very proud of that, but nobody's going to go down like that. But in reality, it is so important, and it has to be done correctly. And yes, Garnier did a great job. You did a great job. Freezy Nichols did a great job out of Terrapin. Everybody was watching over us because they couldn't shut it down while it was going up. And there's still some, like the ponds are going to be something we have to talk about, but we should be very proud of the fact that we, you know, it's almost like, you know, if you buy a Jaguar, we want to show it off to everybody, but you know, that's our Jaguar.
But if you buy a brand-new beautiful toilet, you don't necessarily want to show that.
But it also tells why our sewer rates are very high. And it's not that we're higher than anybody else, but that sewer rate, which technically is, you know, usually runs about three times your water rate, but it's because of that $10 million plan up there. So we should all be understanding is that, you know, that's where our sewer cost to go. And not just that, you know, the sewer lines and everything can be replaced and fixed and replaced. That there alone is the single most expense the city has.
Thank you. Counselor McCary?
I pretty much support what Phil just said. I agree. This is a great asset, great service to our community, and all we need to do now is pay for it.
Yep. Sounds great. Thanks for all the work on this, and we are very happy that our toilets continue to flush, and everything continues to work with that, and look forward to some of the additional new residents coming on to help pay for this stuff.
Absolutely.
So great. Thank you. Great work on this, and again, thank you for just the caring feeding of all of us.
Absolutely. So then we're going to move to water, so we're going to go to clean water now.
There you go.
I like that.
So I think some folks have requested kind of a water looping update, and you know, we're working with the city to try to meet the terms of your development agreement for Alsatian Oaks. But with that project, we're really working to, I think, enhance the overall infrastructure of the city and provide for some redundancy and resiliency, I think, for the long term, and really for the folks towards the west. This is something I did real quick, so this is not any official map you can get anywhere, but you know, I'd like to keep things simple. The red is basically what the current, I would say, Castleville system serves. And so you know, you have a large tank up on the hill. You've got some facilities down there on Old 90 as you come in. You've got a couple wells in town that really drive, you know, the bulk, the bulk of the system. And I've got some numbers and data here in a little bit. And then you've got the blue area out there is the Medina Valley, what they call the Medina Valley well, Medina Valley Supply Company that was acquired by the city. That was built when that Simlinger development went in, in that area, and then was acquired and expanded and serves Tractor Supply, Dollar General, serves the county building down there on the corner. And so that blue area is a standalone system. And then actually, the airport has its own ID number system, but it just serves the airport. And so that's really your collective inventory within the city. And I just kind of wanted to start here, and then I'm going to also end here, just to kind of explain what we're doing. And so the city signed a development agreement back in fall of 2019. I have to start using fall, spring, because I don't remember the exact months after we get going. And a part of that development agreement, and subsequently the escrow agreement and the joint utility agreement, you basically had agreed to deliver 586, or up to 586, new living unit equivalents for Phase 1 of that agreement, okay? And you have about 50 existing LUEs out there on that Medina Valley system, just to give you some perspective. So we needed to be able to deliver that water, so you can meet the terms of your agreement. And so we basically have three projects in order to meet the terms of that agreement. Two are for water, and one is for wastewater. I'll quickly cover wastewater, but I don't have a lot of details beyond what's on this slide. I'm focusing on water looping tonight. And so the water line improvements, which I call Project A, is going to be a 16-inch line that will extend basically from the Medina Valley water supply well. It'll come across US 90 and then down the right-of-way, all the way to Tondry Parkway. This will involve a bore, which will have a 30-inch casing under US 90. I think that casing allowed you to go up to an 18-inch at some point, so you know, has a little bit of future in it, maybe if you would need to go there. And it's about 5,200 feet of 16-inch pipe, and it replaces a fair amount of section where you have 10- or 12-inch pipe extending out to the dealership currently. The water supply system also has to be upgraded. We did some due diligence, as you know. We tested that well. It was originally said it could pump up to 2,200 GPM. We were counting on about 2,000 of that when we did the preliminary work for the city. And we got it up to 2,200, and the drawdown was very minimal. So it's probably actually over 2,200. We just weren't equipped that day to get any higher than that. So we do know it meets at least what we needed to move forward, and so the current well pumps 400 GPM, and that's set to go up to 2,000. So in what we call LUEs, so the TCQ has a formula for all this stuff. So right now, this is just to give you some perspective, just on the well pump, so each of these categories has different requirements. So just on the well pump, if you went, it's .6 GPM per LUE. You can, right now, serve 666, and you can go up to 3,300, okay? So from a well pumping perspective, it's going to feel pretty good.
The water's pretty strong.
Okay. And then just remember that 2,000, when I talk to you about the existing system when I get to that slide, just it'll give you perspective of the east and west side. We're going to go from storage from 50,000 gallons to 300,000 gallons. So this is ground storage. So ground storage, you've got to have at least 200 per LUE. If you have elevated, it's 100, okay? So at 200, that goes from 250 to 1,500. So pump and storage are pretty good, right? Okay, where we start to get into our limitations really going to be on the pressure tank. So we're going to take that from 250 to 15,000. You've got to divide that by 20. And now, if you have elevated tank, normally you don't have a pressure tank. So on this side, you have the elevator. Now, you have a pressure tank because you're supplying a piece of your system that way, but for the most part, the elevator, if it's up in the air, is pushing the pressure, right? And so you don't necessarily have a pressure tank if it's up in the air. So that's the benefit. So if you go elevated, less storage, and you get some pressure requirement, and you don't need the 20 per. But since we're pumping, that gets us to 750. So if you add the 586 to the 50, we get to 636. So we've got about, what, 114 probably additional capacity based on pumping of this facility. We're also working to deliver fire flow of 2,000 GPM to both your existing customers and the new customers on that system. The reason I wanted to kind of walk through those numbers a little bit is, you know, one is with this well and connecting it into the existing system, so that 16-inch line is basically going to connect this water supply system with the system that serves the current city proper. And there's some details on that. The wastewater line, just to give you a quick, is going to be a 24-inch line, expanded basically where the East Side Leer Station project came across 90 and stopped. It's going to go west until you get to the Alsatian Oaks development property. It's roughly 1,600 feet to get that. Let's go to the next slide. This is just a quick schematic of both projects. So this is the well side over here, Cashville State Bank out of Victory Lane, if you're familiar with it. So we're going to pour under US 90, and that water line's going to come all the way to Tondry Parkway, okay? The wastewater line picks up the East Side Leer Station. It comes across 90 here, right by Tractor Supply and Auto Maxwell, and will gravity all the way to the Alsatian Oaks property, determined at this point. At that point, they'll pick it up, and at this point, they'll pick it up to extend it into the development. We have one little jog to get around the transformer pad here to the right-of-way, but you have easement through most of this, and we're working with John right now and the staff to try to acquire an easement for this remaining portion. We have two alternate linements down here. We can only get easement, but we are trying to acquire that for future. Hopefully, we'll be able to get to terms on that. It looks stable, but wait till it's done. So if we look at the existing system, and I excluded the airport, I didn't include that in this, but basically, if you go to TCQ website, it says you have 1,311 connections. You have 500,000 gallons of elevated storage. Pumping is around 1,200 when I add the two pumps up. So we're adding in 2,000, and you're able to deliver 1,200 on this side, okay? So it gives you some perspective that when we tie these two in, we're adding some pretty good capacity to the overall system. You do have some ground storage and pressure tank. A lot of this is over there off of Old 90. When you come down the hill, you see the little system there to the right. That's where most of that is. And then, you know, the main heart of the system's connected with two 8-inch lines coming under the river. One's kind of down south, near, I guess, Landmark Inn and that area coming across, and then the other's further upriver, not too far from here. So that's really how it gets extended over and serves Country Village and all the way out to the Chevy dealer to that. So go to the next slide. So going to end where we started, right? So basically, what we're doing with this upgrade is we're going to maximize the ability of this system, number one, right? We're going to increase pumping, storage, delivery, which should enhance fire flow for everybody that gets served over here. And we're going to interconnect it with this red system, okay? And so now, and quite frankly, with this expansion with Alsatian Oaks in Phase 1, you're getting real close to where you're going to need another well, honestly. And you know, once you reach a certain number of connections, you've got to have redundancy in the wells. We're able to achieve that, we believe, with the interconnect with the main system, in that we can deliver emergency water to both sides if a well was to go down or something was to go out. So that's what you have to be able to maintain if you don't have that redundancy in well. I just point that out. As we move forward, and Phase 2 comes along, we're probably going to be needing to be looking at a few items, and I have that on the next system. So I guess what I want to point out is that we're interconnecting two of your systems, one that's been the long term, and will continue to deliver for the city, and one of the assets you acquired at some point, okay? So really, the looping is creating some extra resiliency for this side of the city. So I want folks to know, while we're trying to deliver based on the agreement, we're doing this in the context of trying to help the overall system improve. So let's go to the next slide.
And if I can just point out, that is, with all of the negatives that we have with the growth that's happening around here, we have negatives of traffic. We have negatives of changing just the way that the city looks and feels and is. But with that comes, as we start expanding this out, we're concentrating with help from brilliant people like Russell and some other very dedicated people. We're working on creating additional benefit to the city that we don't currently have. Currently, if we go down, then we go down. We lose one more well, we're going to be hurting. As we start tying these things together and look at this as a greater master plan, it really allows us to ensure our own availability of our critical infrastructure. So I appreciate all of the time and effort that's going into this, and the view of it as more of a long-term, not just short-term, how do we meet the existing needs, but a longer-term, how do we make sure that this is more substantial for the people that live here, so that they have a better quality of life?
Absolutely.
And lower risk. Yep?
Go to the last slide. So I think the summary for me is, you have two major systems that are now going to be interconnected when we get done with this next year, okay? You're going to have improved and upgraded service to the east side, okay? And you're going to have redundancy and reliability basically to the west side. So I say that, but I think we have to keep our eye on the future. And so I just wanted to kind of leave you with some things to ponder maybe as you look forward. Some are always maybe good or bad, but I just think these are the ideas that kind of come up. One is, I think at some point, we do need to have elevated storage on the east side, okay? I kind of view the long-term of the city as you're driving from both ends, right? Either way, from that same elevation. The other is, you're going to need an additional well to support any more added growth and to maintain your compliance. So we have to start looking, where is that going to be? Is that going to be an existing asset? You have one at the airport. If we do that, that's got criteria and things that we would have to do. And if you try to put the elevated tank right next to the airport, that's probably going to be a little dicey with FAA, so maybe there's some limitations to that site.
You say elevated tank.
You own other property and other assets. Do we look to those and develop those? So you know, there's some loaded questions in here. And I think the other is, right now, you have, the Medina Valley system has a one-way interconnect to the school district. So you can provide water to them, but it can't come the other way. And so do you look at, maybe making that two-way, just for emergency conditions? And then the other water utility that's in and around here would be East Medina, which is up on the top of the hill. So you could look at emergency interconnects. A lot of communities do that. So these are just, I think, future considerations that, you know, we'll have to keep in mind as we continue to move forward, and as you contemplate what you're going to do with Phase 2 of the development agreement that you currently have on the table. So I think with that, I don't think, yeah, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Please, can I start first? I guess for Russell and John, didn't we, there's a well on the property in front of Walmart, Harvey Tunders' well. Didn't we get that tested, and it tested good? Is that something still that we could possibly use? Wasn't that something that Will Collins was going to throw at us? Because it's got to have some water rights to it, right?
It did test well, you're right. But I think we're thinking of maybe further up that map.
Further up the hill?
No, further up that map that we saw, you know.
What do you mean when you say further up the map?
Location-wise.
Further east is what I think.
Further east?
Further east.
Meaning the well further east, and that well there, just not in the right spot?
Well, there's, so the camera investigation, casing looks in good order, so it's...
Yeah.
We did not pump test it, but it probably doesn't deliver near the, maybe half of what Medina Valley, or a little less than half, maybe 8,000 to 1,000 GPM.
Not big enough.
So it could have, it could have a use. The issues, I think the two issues are, is one, it's located on Highway 90 frontage, you know? So that means you've got to have, you've got to get it to storage or something. So I don't know that you're going to want to do that right on the frontage, so that means you've got to take it back somewhere. So that would have to be resolved. The other is, you typically have to have sanitary control around a well, and that well's an irrigation well, so there was never sanitary control set up around it. And so you've had a lot encroach on it, and so I don't know whether we could achieve sanitary control based on TCQ. So if we couldn't, we'd have to ask for an exception. Doesn't mean it's not possible, but those are some things, I think, Todd, that would. So I think well's in good shape. It could be an asset. Our, I think our thought and the due diligence is just to make sure it wasn't a liability, you know, had a bad casing or was, you know, maybe creating some issues with the aquifer from that perspective. So I think those things are good. It's just, it's not an ideal location, and it's not an ideal situation, but it's an asset on the table, I guess.
So if you were going to... So if you were going to, if you were going to put a storage tank in, elevated or ground, ideally, you would want the well very close to that storage tank?
Yeah, ideally, you know, you're kind of co-located, and so, you know, you're putting some improvements at the Medina Valley well, but we're maxing out the space you have there. So if you wanted to do anything else there, you'd have to get some additional real estate.
But we're having to pump it uphill to get to Alsatian Oaks.
Well, what I'm saying is, if you were to, if you were to want to place the elevated, let's say, and the additional well here, Todd, we'd have to acquire some additional property, because we're, we have no more, actually, we had to resize the pumps, because when we first started, we were going to have to have a pad mounted transformer, it was going to take up too much space, and then...
I got you.
And so we're kind of maxed out on space here for what we've got. So that means you either have to acquire property here to expand here, or the city owns behind the Chevy dealer a parcel, and I think at that time was considered, maybe that's where, actually, I think the water line halfway ran up that property to get there. So you could, you know, you could develop, try to develop a well and a storage, maybe it's the elevated here in that location.
You've got to be careful, because you're right in line with the airport runway.
Yeah.
Airport approach, too, so...
You know, the three acres that the city's acquiring or getting from the developer per the agreement's probably not ideal, because again, it's right in the flight, probably the flight plan. At least if you get over here, you're kind of in the outer bands...
Right.
...of the FAA, so.
Is there, there's not enough elevation in that Alsatian Oaks subdivision to put a storage tank on the ground and develop any pressure? It has to be one hundred and sixty-eight feet there?
Yeah.
Paul said yeah?
No, he said no.
Oh, he said no?
I don't know.
I thought we had an agreement with Mr. Collins that there would be some infrastructure development on the Alsatian Oaks property in the way of water production, water development, and the back corner, northeast corner of that property would be a pretty ideal spot for an elevated, not an elevated, but even a gravel level tank, similar to the one we have.
I feel like I remember that, too, Paul.
Sounds familiar.
So per the agreement, I believe you're getting three acres, three acres for municipal use, whether you use that for water, fire, police, I think is probably your discretion. I do not know the location of that three acres. But my only concern was, it would need to be, it would need to be probably in that northeast corner.
Northeast corner, yeah.
So, yeah, go ahead.
There was some discussion a number of years ago about the type of casing that are in the agricultural wells, being welded casing, whereas a municipal well requires it as welded casing, if I recall correctly. So, you know, that Tomrey well would be great for fire suppression or other such things, but we probably couldn't loop it into our municipal supply.
I got you.
Yeah, it would have to be converted, but it did look in pretty good condition, that we may be able to bank that argument. I think, I think the bigger issue's the sanitary control and where you would send the water for storage, yep.
We have to pump that water all the way up the hill somewhere and then bring it back down, so you're doubling your pipe network and everything else.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah, that was the thing I was going to point out, is that if you locate facilities too far, then you've got to pipe it, which has got cost, and so is that offset by the tank going further up in the air as opposed to being lower on the ground? So those are, those are things we have to do in the final analysis.
Probably none of the decisions that we want to make, anyway.
I guess what I'm saying, nothing is really off the table.
Right.
And we need, we need to think kind of long-term and what makes sense, but also realize, we're taking steps, right? So just because we take the next step, doesn't, doesn't mean it's the last step, it's just, you know, we're trying to do this incrementally and what makes sense from a cost perspective.
Thank you, Russell. No further questions for me.
That's okay. Any questions?
I guess, were you saying that the property we own behind the Chevy dealership, that may be a suitable solution, or you don't know yet, or you just worry about that down the road?
I think it's a suitable solution.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's a solution where you don't have to acquire the property. You've got like eight acres there, it's got flood plans, so we've got to deal with that a little bit, but I think we can manage that. So yes, it's an asset in your inventory that could be utilized, where you don't have to acquire the property. But you've got to build all new facilities there, fence it and all that other thing. But it's large enough, you're not necessarily locked in, so there's some attractive things about it, and then there's some, you know, maybe things that are not. It would be nice to have the elevated tower there by the bank, to me, for, I'm sure you're going to put Welcome to Castroville on it, right, or Castroville, Texas, so it can be a...
Really? That's a good idea.
It can be, you know, an icon for the city of, that you're here, right? But, you know, we don't have to paint it green and camo it into the hill.
Ornie, you don't like that idea?
Hey, see, that takes care of Welcome to Castroville sign.
Ornie wants us to sell ad space on there and pay for it.
Oh, boy.
But, so that might be a reason, you know?
I'm kind of thinking like, you know, Cabela's, like, we're up there with Microsoft, big bucks advertising.
Councilman Martinez?
I have nothing.
Councilman Kerry, did you have any other questions, comments on this?
No, I just want to thank Russell for all these jobs. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Russell, for the update. John?
Thanks for watching over.
Yes.
I was the razzle, he's the dazzle, just so you know.
I'm going to have to see, he stepped out, so I'm not sure how to fix this.
Oh, we haven't finished with John yet.
No.
Next one.
Not yet.
We've got thirty minutes.
Thirty minutes. We'll go through it fast.
Russell, did you get the two images that I emailed you? I sent them to Darren as well, but I didn't hear back from him.
Oh, I believe it is.
I will have to go and look in my email, because I didn't see anything. Was it today?
Okay. I sent them to Darren earlier and then I sent them to you at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, I can run, get them if you need me to.
That'll help with my, my debt on this. Thank you.
Well, we still have John with three more items here, or two more items.
Yeah.
And the first thing that I'm going to talk about is the TCQ, the reorder, still pending with us, and it's actually the one last order, which is the trees or the vegetation that's around the ponds. That's just one thing that, I guess, since back when they first came out, late twenty-seventeen to twenty eighteen, and well, it was one of the requirements that they asked for us to remove those trees and the vegetation around those ponds. Well, we ended up getting to that, some of our staff did some of that work on one edge of the ponds, and I'll show it to you when I kind of get to that, but you'll see that they did, we removed them, but it started sloughing off, so that's when we realized that probably not a good idea, being that that's also a dam, not only is it the whole our effluent for irrigation, but it's also giving some runoff, so it's more than what we were expecting. And this is just a picture of a map, and the report that I'm talking about is one that I think, I believe she gave to TO from Givler Engineering. I don't know if y'all saw that in our packet. But here's the, in red is the treatment plant that Russell was talking about. Pond number one is on the, I guess, north side, and pond number two is the one on the south side. Yes, thanks. And then you'll see the regional park, which is, you know, as y'all know, that it has some residents, residents in there. And without giving you, just giving you an overall of that report that you have, the ponds themselves are not in good shape. They've had some signs of wear over the years, not sure how long they've been in place, but they're showing signs of feather, not feather, but as a strong term, of wear and tear. So KFA, KFA, Kate Fries and Associates has helped us with this, and they hired Givler engineers who has more experience in dams and structural integrity, so they're helping us as a third-party engineering firm for this. The pond one, the next one, pond one right here, is, it's showing signs of movement. There's apparently, there's some movement, it's actually one same movement, some sloughing off going this way and that way. Both ponds are steep, if you go to the park, you'll see that these, these banks are steep going this way, but even toward the pond on the inside, the water is the same thing, which doesn't help the actual dam, the actual dam itself. Here's, here's the spillway for dam number two, and there's no spillway for dam number one.
John, what are your red dots? What's it numbering?
Those were just where they took pictures.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they have some photos, some of them you'll see that, I just had, I just did a couple slides just to summarize, but they numbered them so that, you know, where they're standing and the direction they're taking the picture.
Got it.
Those, like I said, those slides lack a spillway. Here's a picture of where I was telling you, these, this, this, this line, this fence line, and the trees were actually along through here. When the guys cut the trees, you'll see how much has sloughed off and fallen into the ponds. So that's, that was one of the main factors that we went back to TCQ and said, we realize if you want us to do this, but it's, there's a high risk that this will have a negative effect on this bank up there, and the downside of it. So here's another picture of the erosion of pond number two. Excellent. And this is the spillway for pond number two. You see all the underlying, this is supposed to be concrete altogether, it looks like just rocks, but it's supposed to be a smooth spillway, so water can flow through, but there's been no maintenance one way or the other, which doesn't help as well. In that report that you have, working with Kate Fries and Givler Engineering, they put together alternatives, three alternatives of what we should, we should do. One alternative is to breach both dams, which would be, for the next time, so, breach both dams, one here, what that means by putting culverts in there here and through here, and then also putting in a drainage channel. In doing so, we would also reduce the footprint of the pond, or so that we wouldn't have so much flow or effluent in here, reducing these two, taking that water out. Next slide. That's alternative number one. Alternative number two is building up this side of pond number two and the inside of pond number two as well, and then redoing this spillway channel, even possibly upgrading the amount that can go through there. And knowing this footprint of this pond number two, as well as here, and putting in some culverts. This is actually the alternative that, working with Kate Fries and Associates and the engineer at Givler, we think we should go with at some point. It would take us out of the alleged agreement or order with TCQ, give us an operational standards, and it's not the cheapest by all means, but probably the one that we're looking at would be best. Excellent. Here's the reason why we think this one would be best, because this is a lot of dirt work that we end up doing on this pond number one, as well as coming all the way out of the park area, and I believe they just did some nice work in the park area. So all that would be gone, and then they extended, there's a road that goes through the regional park, existing road that goes through the regional park, and you see how far out the new, the fact that it would have to go. Right now, the, we're showing how steep it is, it's like one and a half to one, one and a half horizontal to one vertical. It should be more like three to, three or four to one, so more of a gradual slope rather than what it is now, and this is the new road, new road that's going through, and then redoing this, upsizing this channel, or that'd be, that'd be expensive. So, next slide.
That's, that's it.
Is it? Okay. Well, that's pretty much in a nutshell, the last violation that we have to fix. We asked for an extension to get to this point, because they had wanted us to have already fixed this with them, and haven't done last year, but we told them that with what we had noticed, it was the sloughing off, the new degrees, that there was stuff, it wouldn't be possible for us to do that. So we asked for an extension in December of thirty-first, this year, we'll send them another request for an extension as well, to give them a plan of what we're going to do, based on the recommendations from KFA and Givler Engineering, and give them some milestones, give them some dates, the full completion dates on where we're at, what we accomplished. My thinking is about two years it'll take us to complete everything, permitting and getting everything done, because it is a dam, it's a dam, they're going to have to review it and approve it, and approve everything that we're going to, we're going to show that we proposed. So we'll ask for that extension before December the first time.
Do you have rough cost estimates on each different option?
Yes, that was on the, on the last report, I guess, on the report itself.
It's in your package, I think, is what you're talking about.
John, in all of those options you got there, I'm seeing that we don't need that much pond in either one of them?
Yeah, that's the idea, is we're talking about reducing the footprint of these ponds.
Is that, the ponds can be smaller because of the new...
Well, as it stands now, with as much flow as we have, our lack of flow, we can't even deliver everything to the, to the veins, or the veins, to the limbs. Yes, we're not even, based on flushing, we don't have enough flushable, as it is.
You don't have enough flow.
People need to flush more.
Yeah, and this road that he's talking about is going to help.
Wow.
It'll help us, because we're only one, running one biological track right now.
But if you, if you make them ponds smaller and that, the new wastewater treatment plant would ever be running at a hundred percent, would you have enough pond for that wastewater?
We're hoping, there's a few things going on there, can you say that? Because it might be the word, we have, we'll be able to discharge down the, down the...
Downstream?
Channel, yeah.
Down the river?
Mm-hmm, yeah. And which, and eventually go back to that point where you mentioned, how many guys do we need? If we might only need two, and then one guy, just because we don't have to have so much operation, I'll pull one in.
No further questions.
John, related to that discharge, are you all working or thinking about the banks permit?
I did see that in the files of past, personally, I've, there are files, not yet, because of this issue right here, but we can do it in correlation a little bit, to have that ready, but I, there's, I said something, we're not ready for that.
Right, well, what I remember is, when I was on council last time, three years ago, Russell, who disappeared.
He left.
He gave a presentation, either he did or had Sarah, San Antonio River, throw it in, because they were willing to work with the city to help the city with that, in return that they would get some of the city's sewage water for one of their parks down south of us, if I'm right. That seems to be what it is.
Who's there?
Because we own the water, and if we put it in the river, then we can sell it to someone downstream, and so that may be, if you haven't, you might want to talk to Russell about that, maybe have Russell come in, and maybe in the near future, because we can't discharge the... Because I, we can't discharge the water to the river until we get that permit in place.
Right.
We, we can discharge to the river, but if we want to sell it, we have to have that permit in place before we can discharge it. Because once you do it, then you lose your right.
Yeah, and they, and they want, they, they would like first run refusal, say, if they would want it, then they want, they want to take it. Otherwise, the first person that wants to buy it, they have to ask them for, for them.
Sarah.
Sarah.
But we're, but we weren't selling all of it to them, just a portion of it.
Oh, yeah, who?
Yeah, it was just a portion of it.
Right.
That's right, because you heard Sarah also, right? So you know, but you probably did that. Did you come talk to us two years ago?
No, they didn't come talk to us. I sent them over here.
Oh, okay. Yes. Because if I remember right, you all didn't, but Sarah did not want all of it, but they wanted a proportion of it.
That's true.
Now, I seem to remember that there was some kind of time limitation on that? Did I hear that correctly?
You, you have to have it in place, and you can correct me, but you have to have it in place before you discharge water to the river.
That's true.
Right, okay.
I think, I think it's called a return flow permit, yeah.
Okay. Well, this is all I have on, on this, on this actual topic or project. Unless y'all have.
Yeah, and we, and we can see the cost.
Okay. It, it is in there, if you look on.
Yeah, option one, alter, alternate, alternate.
The 1.5 to 4.7.
Yeah, the first option is cheapest one.
Yes.
But we're still talking a lot of money.
Yeah.
It's still a lot of money. Councilman Carey, did you have any more on this?
I do believe that we had agreed, maybe a couple of years ago, to pursue the return flow permit. And I really think we ought to, and I'm sure we are, in the process of doing that right now.
Right, we're not, we're not currently, but we can.
It's on our pending list.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Because we need to, ultimately, we'll have to do that, the sooner the better, I think.
All right, great.
I don't have anything.
All right. I think that we should continue on this, just a time check, we've got 15 minutes left. But I definitely think we should continue to pursue this, especially if we're able to recoup some of the money that we're spending on having to do that. We have to do this. So if we can recoup that through being able to sell the water through the bed and banks, then I think we should look at all of our options. How soon do you feel like you can come back with a, a recommendation?
On the, the actual recommendation for this work? Probably, once I get the schedule with Givler and KFA, I'll, I'll come back with the recommendation.
Okay, well, let's make sure that that's inclusive of what would be required to be able to sell the, the water, and what steps we have to go through to get that bed and banks permit, or the, the discharge permit? Okay, sure.
The next, the next item I have is the east side lift station on Bullitt. And we're still in progress with the testing with the contractor, with them. They, they made some repairs on some of the areas of the line, sewer line, and we cleaned the line prior to them making the line, cleaning and televising the line. So right now, we're still waiting for them to come back and do some more testing of the manholes as well.
Okay, and when are they scheduled to do that?
Uh, I was waiting for Cynthia, I was hoping Cynthia was gonna be here, so she could tell me what her, her and, and the, her, or his lawyer were talking about.
Okay.
So that was the last that I heard.
This is all included in the talks.
Irrigation?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
The gas line test, the gas line test started last Monday with West Texas Gas. They finished Thursday night, the testing Thursday night, and our system was, was back on to our, our normal West Texas gas as of Friday, so.
Nice.
Instead of the, the two or 12-day.
Yeah.
It was a lot, a lot shorter, so hopefully a lot less expensive.
When do we get the final bill on that?
Uh, actually, they're gonna give us a report to, to show us what they found, or if they found anything, and then I'm sure that, that'll come right after, the invoice will probably come right after. And I, and we asked CPS if they would help us with the view of that, to make sure that everything checks out with that.
Great, thank you.
Right now, under the capital improvement projects for 2021, I have the administration, information, administration building, smart meter consultant. We're doing interviews, or trying to do interviews with some of those consultants, to see about what would be the best person, best group, best, best firm to help us with the process of acquiring smart meters, or seeing which is the best ones we should get, and how and why.
You know, and I still think with that, we really need to look at what our, our actual return is, what are we gonna accomplish by doing that? I don't think it's, I mean, trust me, I, I know automation, I love automation, and there are times that you should do it, and times that you shouldn't. So I, I just want to make sure that we understand the, the cost benefit analysis.
Yeah.
So what are we actually achieving out of this?
And these are some of those groups that can share, or share some of that with us, and that's basically what they do, so they'll, they'll be able to explain that to us.
Okay.
They'll give us some performance analysis versus having it all funded through one program, or even, not even the residents, these, our residents seeing a dime coming out of the, our, their, their rates.
Okay.
There's other ways that they could build in the meters.
Okay. I, I think that we just need to be a little bit more methodical on how we're approaching that, but we can, we can continue to talk about it as we go forward.
Okay.
So thanks for pushing on that.
Generator, we're trying to get a generator at Public Works. We think it's pretty, pretty important to have one over there in the case that we lose power for, for some reason. The wastewater treatment, I'm sorry, yeah, wastewater treatment plant, I just talked about the removal of the trees, so that, that's one covered. The SCADA system, I'm looking at getting a bid from a contractor that's on the by-board, so hopefully in the next couple of months, I'll, I'll be bringing that to you, to you all for approval. And that's, that's for the wastewater treatment plant that I mentioned earlier as well. Cleaning and tel, CCTV is cleaning and televising the sewer lines, which we have $50,000 for, for that, for this year, is to come out and clean, so we'll clean and televise some of our, our sewer lines. I'll get a by-board bid for that one as well, there's an outfit, a group that does that, that's on the by-board. Electrical assessment, there's 80,000. We have a contractor that's raised and cleaned and oiled and re-leveled some of our transformers, some of them have been on Country Village, or even in River Bluff. He did some in West Hines, it's outstanding. And he's also helping us with the analysis of the, our overhead poles and ours, too. Which goes along with this tree trimming. Last year, we had a, going up for bids, R and E, and didn't get any, any back from, from sending that back. So we're gonna, we're gonna wait till, till we're on spring to try and avoid the oak will, to go put that back out for bids.
John, if you remember, when you do that, make sure you count how many things you do.
Okay.
Again, I'll, I'll press the company to bid on that.
Okay. And I'm gonna try and simplify the process. I was thinking, maybe, maybe it was just too much, maybe it was just, no, maybe I might need to simplify it or something.
You know, maybe, if you want to, I'll get him and you and me together, and he can tell us what maybe suggests, do different to make where people wouldn't be afraid to bid on that.
Okay. The water and the water side, we had our, our city engineer, Mike, who signed with what happened, I guess, this summertime with, you know, our, our not being able to turn off some valves, when we had a, had our leak, I think it was on Lafayette. That was a big concern to us, because we lost, we lost water, almost the whole city lost water that time. He, he picked some best, best spots, locations, that we can install those, so we're gonna purchase and get those installed as quickly as we can. Maybe even hire a, a subcontract, somebody outside to help us install those, so we'll see.
Is that something you could bring back to us, and just so that we're aware of where they're going, why you chose those locations, and what the, the impact is at?
Sure, we, we already have a map of, of the locations.
Perfect.
So, yeah, I could, I could bring them back.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Good. And lastly, is the, the other projects that we had on our 10-year, or five-year plan. And I don't know if you guys have that list with you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And we've, we've got, we've got questions.
Okay, good. We're working with the city financial advisor, his name is Christopher Allison, to identify the options for funding this. So we're gonna have to get creative on how we're gonna fund this. As you know, everything's tied around our rates, our rates and, and how we are able to survive with operating maintenance. So that's, that's one of our, I guess, challenges, opportunities.
Right? I, I think that Councilwoman Martinez might have a question about the existing budget?
Sure.
Yeah, um, okay, we said we had extra money in the bank to start phase one of River Bluff Electrical. You remember, Paul? Remember? So I have some concerns why phase one is not listed under electrical, and instead the whole project is listed as, meeting with city finance advisor to figure out how we're gonna pay for it. So what's going on with River Bluff's electrical then?
We put it in the, to be put out, I guess, to see how we're gonna place, how we're gonna.
So several months back, and then we talked, every budget season, we talked about the overall big projects of the, the cap, the capital improvement plans. This was one of them that we had said, hey, we're gonna all in together. Yes, you're right, we did, we did allocate some funds in our current budget, and we did have something left over from our, our reserves. And so we have to decide, I guess, as a council, okay, do I want to use, and how much do you want to use of that reserve money for ABC projects, besides going out still for bond? Because some of these projects are gonna cost several million dollars, that we can't afford to get out, out all of our reserve funds, we're gonna actually have to go out, go out for a bond. So we have to determine, or we have to determine, hey, you know what, we can't afford to use a million dollars of our reserves today to do ABC project, besides going out for the bond for the other one. So we did allocate some, within that five-year plan, didn't, didn't you have something allocated for like this year for?
For 2021, we were supposed to do phase one, because we were breaking it up in phases. We're not doing the whole project together at one.
John, is that the bid, you remember the bid you got? You had shared with us?
Yeah, but, but I understood it, that what we did is we decided to put it all together so that it would be all together and stay together.
No.
What we discussed during the budget session was that we were gonna.
Do it in phases.
Yeah, in phases.
With phase one starting 2021.
No, that's not what I understood.
Yes.
And.
The budget.
Because we, we added that, we added that money to this.
$510,000?
Yeah. Oh, I got the prices.
Oh, I know you got the prices, but I know what we discussed too, because I've been adamant about this since my district elected me into this seat. And here we go again, we, we can't do it. We can't kick us down the foot. We, we approved it to be done in phases.
So I tell you what, let's do, if, if you would be okay with this, why don't we?
New bond, funding costs.
Because we, we had this discussion during the, during the budget reviews. So can you just go back and take a look at that, see what we agree upon during that area, and come back with that documentation for the next council meeting? Would you be okay with that?
Yeah. Because I'm not letting this die, I mean.
You want me to come back with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, just based on what we had.
Discuss.
What we had discussed during the budget.
This is what I came back with.
Yeah, no, we approved it. Go ahead.
We discussed the fact that there is a, there is a reserve fund, because we did not spend the money in the last several sessions. So I, I support the council, council member Martinez's position, we really need to address the issues.
I agree.
Yeah, I think it needs to be addressed, the budget actually shows as a bond fund, so.
And the reason it shows that is because we had originally, we had first.
No, you don't know what you're saying, so I guess you only.
We'll, we'll come back in December, and we'll, and yes, we, we gather the money in our reserve funds, it's just a matter of, okay, for phase one, John, we're gonna do the, that.
Yeah.
Project that we discussed. And just so you know that, yes, it's gonna reduce that, that reserve, but that's the whole intent of it.
Right, but that's just to do phase one, and then that we were gonna go back and look at how we were gonna pay for the other phases.
Yeah, these are, it's not.
I've lost some of the audio, so, so.
Yeah, and that's what I said, remember, this doesn't have some of the survey work, some of the easements, if I need easements.
We're fixing.
Where it showed, where it showed that number. I said, this phase one still lacks some of that, some of that.
And just know that we, we're just now the second month of our, our fiscal year, so we haven't, we're gonna start this immediately anyway, so just, we're.
I just don't want any project to fall off the wayside like it has in the past.
No, it, it won't happen, so we'll make sure that we're moving forward with it.
You're talking with me, yeah.
All right, so, and I, I would like to come back and, and look at this, we, we can talk about this for the next agenda, or the agenda for the next one, we'll make sure that, that this is addressed, so we'll talk about this.
We got Paul yet with the thorough plan.
He's gonna have to call in, and we're gonna lose him in about two minutes.
Yeah, so actually, Paul, do you wanna, would you be all right with just moving this one to the next one, so that you've got more time, we're not rushing things?
And I have these that I printed for you.
Is that all right? I'm sorry to do that to you, I just.
I might.
I'd rather give it.
I might actually be able to show it in person, so.
Yeah. I'd like to give it proper attention and give you an actual opportunity for that, instead of just rushing through it, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, great, thank you, I appreciate that.
Good luck.
The next item, we are, we are not gonna go into executive session, and this is about the, the reviews, so you each have.
I think you.
Homework.
There you go. You got homework.
Can we do that at home?
Yep.
Yeah.
Go do your evaluations, and then.
Well, that's what I was hoping for.
So what is the plan for that? We're gonna come down?
So basically, you have the evaluations for the city administrator, the city secretary, and the police chief. At the next meeting in December, the plan is to have these already completed from all of y'all, and then we'll go back, meet an executive session one at a time, and then you'll call us in and you give us our evaluation.
Okay.
But y'all have a hard copy, we can send it to you electronically, electronically if you like, but that kind of gives it about a month to kind of get that completed, so.
Great, thanks, I appreciate that, I think that's a great idea.
You got anything to add?
No, other than I've lost our audios.
Oh, no, okay.
So they'll see it on live stream, but apparently this computer is full, and so I'm not sure about the audacity of what's happened. I cleared it before, but yes, so, it just in case.
Sorry to cut you short too, John.
Oh, that's all right.[1732.12]